Of revisions include the following, the zero tolerance and Cessar reporting requirements. And it's also some changes proposed, language changes from Neola. So I'm gonna go to the red line. So two, three, I just checked. Two, three, four, five. A lot of the two, they're just changes, we did formatting and moved them around. Number three was already current in our policy, number five was already in our policy. And we just moved wording around just to make it formatted better. Under the zero tolerance, there's changes there to language, it's a Senate Bill seventy thirty. Want to keep going? Section C on there, it was, it was in our current policy, we just moved it for formatting. Section D. It was changes based on Neola's recommendation. Section E, it was, there was something added, threats of unsafe, potentially harmful dangers and criminal activities due to Neola suggestions. Letter F, this is, this one we added. Because we've had expulsion hearings where we had an issue with battery and assault on employees, so we actually added physical attack on there as one of those options to make it clear. Section G was just a language that Neola recommended. And then the last big section, you wanna go to the Cessar? This last, section K was due to the Florida statute about reporting on Cessar. And that we are required to report in a timely manner according to the Florida statute, so that was added on there also.
Uh, did we take out the one year?
That's G.
I just thought we had.
It's in G instead of being in the paragraph with F, it's made it to its own letter.
Yeah, it's called a little paragraph, letter G.
Can I just ask a procedural question about, you know, how we report up to the state? What exactly are we reporting? Are we reporting the student, the incident, or are we just reporting the incident and what do we report?
I think we report just a Cessar code, so like if the state wants to know how many, I didn't bring all my Cessar codes, how many weapons you have at a school, they wanna know. That's the information, the student information is attached there, but they're just looking at our report. Cause you know, I know you've heard on the news, there's some districts that said that there's no weapons on their school districts, but then the news reported said that there was a weapon found in this high school and it's not matching, so they're making it more, that we have to be really reporting everything that's on our campus. And it has to match, so they're, this year they're very, they're very focused on the Cessar codes and coding them correctly. So we did training with school administrators at the end of school year, we're probably gonna come back around and do more training. Cause there were some Cessar, some changes that they wanted to make, so we're really trying to focus to understand that they have to do accurate reporting.
So they're more interested in what incident happened, not necessarily the students.
Correct.
Cause I, I get nervous when student information goes.
They do have access to the student information, that goes all up with all our student database, so if they wanna look at the student, but I think the state's more focused on are we accurately reporting their behavioral factions in our schools, or are we trying to say that nothing's happening in our school district when it is?
But it is, okay, thank you.
Has something changed about the one, I feel like we've been told in prior expulsion hearings that the maximum has been one year and then we have to revisit it after a year, but this says minimum period of one year. Has something changed with that, or?
I think it's the same.
Cause I've been wrong in the past. I'm looking at G under.
I think it's the same one, but I'm gonna look at in our current one.
E, uh, G, it's under the new F.
Remember that's the one that we were talking about before that, that actually is a really old policy, right?
No, that's the one that's a battery on an employee.
Right, that's the same one that they're putting in.
Right, that's what drew my eye to it, but then it says any, any, um, I, oh, I guess that doesn't fall under E, I was looking at any student with firearms, weapon, arson, felony.
So, I, our current policy says for a minimum period of one year, so I'm reading. So it's talking about the minimum period for one year was tied into the battery, is that what your question?
That's, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, see what your question is.
Cause there's E, E talks about arson, firearms, then F talks about battery, but then G doesn't talk about anything specific, it just says a period of time. Is that referring to the F or to?
I think it's referring to all of them.
That's actually one of the comments that I had was it almost seems like, and just, if, if you go down to the clean version.
D is the. Mm-hmm.
Um, you can kinda see, so one has a title, or A has a title generally, and then B has zero tolerance. And then C really seems like it should be B three, not a separate C. And D has no title, there's no titles on anything D through K. But it seems like some of the letters should be under the previous letter, does that make sense?
So should.
What they're asking is.
Cause it doesn't make sense.
Zero tolerance, do you put it under, if you put zero tolerance, you make C number three, is that what you're saying? Here's the clean version.
Yeah, so.
Oh, yeah, 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 I see, it should be, like, C should be number three instead because we've talked about.
Cause it's part of zero tolerance.
The tolerance.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Part of zero tolerance, and then the superintendent can consider on a case by case basis, it's still under the topic of zero tolerance.
So they should be three, mm-hmm.
Zero tolerance.
And then D goes into the discussion of law enforcement.
Which is a whole new.
Yeah, which is a whole new thing, but then E refers to D, so it seems like it should be D one. And then F seems like it should be D two, and G.
If G is applying to F, it needs to be a sub of F one, or F A, F little A.
Right.
F one.
And H applies to F. And then I, the student code of conduct adopted annually is kind of a whole new concept.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the, the, the G needs to, because that phrase of G that was already there was part of the assault or attack.
How, how, the one before.
On.
On F.
On teachers, on employees, right?
On F.
Mm-hmm. And do we as a board want to keep that? I know whoever, who was ever in the expulsion hearing with me that time, they had a very lengthy discussion on on that.
You mean calendar year versus academic year?
Yes, versus having leeway, I mean, this is our policy, and we, that day, I can't even remember the exact situation, but we voted kind of to overrule our policy. And those were the issues when we left, we're like, we just violated our own policy because we felt like it didn't give us any flexibility, and yet this new policy is still keeping it firm and solid, so if we wanted any flexibility, we would have to violate our policy, which is bad practice.
Actually, I think it applied to more than one, I'm very good at that.
Let's not refer to any specific.
No, cause it was, there's more than one hearing that's happened in law.
Yeah, there was.
Because maybe it was, it's still accounted as an attack on an employee, but it was.
It actually wasn't.
Yeah, there was, yes. Extensively served. So. So Amy, so if we wanna amend this, would we be in violation of state statute?
So that, that provision, you're talking about the one year for battery on a school.
That's a, that's a.
Right?
Well, one year for.
Like, they're trying to specify the, is it a calendar year or academic year, so.
And it doesn't specify, right now it says for one year.
In the hearings, they made it sound like it was a calendar year in history, and it's been in our policy for like thirty years, and we've always stuck with it.
It has been, it has been for a while.
But in this circumstance, in this one particular expulsion, I think the, the employee, if I recalling it right, even was like, it was an accident, I mean, he was being, the student was being aggressive, and while he was being aggressive, the employee got hurt, and everybody felt bad, and
Oh, I remember this one.
Right. Right.
we ended up making it, I think, as a school year instead of a calendar year, which technically violated this, so
That's right. To the end of the school year.
I just want us to be mindful and deliberate on how we want this to read, so we don't have to do something like that in the future. I, you're looking at me like you got.
Oh, I remember this one.
No, no, I, I agree, I agree with the discussion.
So I know when we looked it up on the statute, the statute doesn't even say.
Calendar. We think that was our, yeah.
It was a Bavard, a very Bavardian thing.
Well, we have, even in C, we have the superintendent may consider the one year expulsion requirement on a case by case basis and request that the board modify the requirement by assigning a student to a disciplinary program in their second chance school.
But does that apply to another letter below it, that's, do you think that would be a subhead of, of G?
I was gonna, I think if we want to make that apply down there, we need to put it down there to make sure it's clear that it does apply down there, but I mean, even, and that's the one that refers to state statute requiring expulsion.
That, that would give the superintendent authority, but it doesn't give the board, or the board's to us.
So they won't have authority. I guess I, I really would like us to really move to like an academic year instead of a calendar year.
That presents a problem when the, the offense is late in the school year.
When they do that.
It has in May.
You're like, oh, two weeks.
So be, be careful with language.
How else can we say this?
I think.
We could specify calendar year.
I don't, I would caution us from defining it that explicitly, a year or by, you know, recommendation, or by board vote, or rather than define it, giving, giving flexibility, but not defining it in statute.
I would just leave it the way it is, and then, because it just says one year, then the board can decide it doesn't, calendar year, or do you wanna?
We need to be a little more clear, we, we don't wanna purposely set this up so we violate our own policy like we had to in the past, I think now's the time to fix that, so that that doesn't happen again.
But on the other hand, when we go to the expulsion hearings, usually there's a recommendation brought to us that, that is defined for staff by what's written in our policy, and if we don't have a definition for them.
Yeah, I mean, they came to us with our own policy, here's the recommendation, because this is your policy, and then we overrule it, it makes them look like they don't have authority to handle, it just, I think it left everybody in kind of a bag. I mean, what do we think the consequences should be for harming one of our staff?
Well, this, this does open some of the discussion around what is the intent of administrative hearing for expulsion. I, if I'm, if I remember correctly, please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Anvil. The administrative hearing for an expulsion is a due process hearing, it is not a hearing of determining consequence. It is a hearing to determine if the offense met up to the student code of conduct and board policy.
And if the school followed the proper.
And the, and the, and the school followed all of the proper processes. I believe the reason that it identifies a superintendent being given the, the authority to change the consequences in response to the behavior, and the board's role is in response to parents challenging the due process is, did it in fact measure up to or rise to the level of an expellable offense? And/or our obligations in investigating and meeting all of our procedural requirements. Not necessarily to alter the term of the consequence, if that makes sense.
That's why now is the time to alter the term of the consequence, like now is the time to set what we think is reasonable, yes?
But I, I think that's in our, in the expulsion manual with, under the levels, it talks about the levels, what kind of consequences for each different level, so I think that's already set.
This is not set in that, this is something separate that's been.
Ms. Anvil, is there a board policy on the intent, purpose, and guidelines of an administrative due process hearing?
So we have a couple, we have a couple, we have a fifty-six-ten.
Fifty-six-ten is the policy.
Let me see if I can call it up.
Yeah, he has. If they have stipulation, they're pretty much.
Yes. So we're working on proposed revisions to fifty-six-ten right now, which is your due process.
So, seems to me that if we're gonna add flexibility or allowance in this policy for the board at the time of an expulsion hearing, then it would need to be consistent with fifty-six-ten. So we may need to be doing, looking at two policies.
What does fifty-six-ten say? I'm sorry, here, I'm getting there.
That's the due process one, I don't have, I don't know if I can.
No, I, I don't think we're talking about the same things, I'm saying this says one year, we, we define it here, I don't think it's defined anywhere else. Because remember, we looked in here when we were going to do it, and it wasn't in our.
It's not defined on forms.
Level one, level two.
It's not what?
It's not defined, a lot of this language from the floor's statute doesn't say one, calendar year one.
In fifty-six-ten?
No.
Yeah, is it point two, are you looking at, or is it just final fifty-six-ten? Oh, here, wait a minute, fifty-six-ten, one moment.
It's under TAP, right?
Open the TAP.
I think of attack or battery on an employee is, like, this is, this is the only place, it's a Bavard thing, we put it in here, that's what we came, the conclusion we came to that day, and we've done it forever, and that's why we are supposed to stick with it, so.
I just, my, my thought too is just, you know, I wanna be careful, in those, in those couple of circumstances that came before us, you know, there were special circumstances, both cases were eighth graders, got to go on to high school. Um, it was, you know, the person, the employee that was, um, you know, attacked or whatever, you know, it was questionable whether it was actually that or not, I mean, you know, there were special circumstances that made so, but there are plenty of times where our employees are actually, you know, I hope they don't even come to us if people realize what they did. Um, but, you know, so I I would be kinda slow in wanting to change that because I think there need to be some pretty serious consequences for laying hands on our employees.
But I think it belongs in here, on our level one, two, three, four, five, everything, every act that one of our students commit right now falls level one, two, three, four, five, and has like five or six choices of consequences for that act, depending on where it falls in level, except this. This has been pulled out of this and put in here, separate from everything else, with no flexibility, no five choices, it is, and that's where we got into trouble. Because we felt like, oh, there should be flexibility, he didn't mean to knock that, that staff member over and break his knee or whatever it was that day. And so we, we had to put flexibility into it when, if it, it was in here, do you guys know what I mean when I say in here?
Right, right, I know what you're talking about.
What is it saying? Our discipline plan, yes, if it was in our discipline plan somewhere, then.
In the discipline plan.
So you want us to identify which ones are full calendar year versus?
No, 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 I'm saying, why is the only thing a, a student can commit, everything that they can possibly do wrong is in our discipline plan, and it's leveled out, except this one thing, hurting one of our employees. That's not in here at all, it's in an actual policy.
Which you want to.
With a, with a single consequence of a year.
Well, there are other.
So they have.
Isn't the firearm?
Batteries on, batteries should be on there.
But here's the one, if it's, if it's, this, this one has been in our policies forever.
The other ones, I feel like they're in there because the state says we have to have them in there. This, like, our discipline plan addresses everything from cheating to a firearm, but doesn't address harming a staff employee.
What you're saying.
Anybody else?
No, I get what you're saying, absolutely, no, I understand what you're saying. It, I'm surprised we don't, but I think we, I think Amy's saying it falls under battery, but.
No, it doesn't, well, it, it does, but, but this policy then takes it one level further and said, here's, here's the consequence, it's a single consequence, there's no flexibility you can pick from these three options.
So are you saying not to put that consequence on there?
That's what I'm.
And then put it, make sure that we have.
Maybe it deserves its own light item in the discipline plan, or something of that nature. Is it normal to have it in the policy, Ms. Anvil?
I'm gonna look at, so there's a specific statutory reference to one thousand six thirteen, it might be statute.
So harming a school district employee might be in statute?
And I'm pretty sure I looked it up when I was reviewing policies and it was.
Yeah. But it didn't say one year, otherwise we wouldn't be violating the state statute. I said, if the state statute says that it's mandatory one year, then we might have violated the state statute, we don't wanna sit on a little quiet.
The other question I had was the addition in that same letter, G, and the student shall be referred to the criminal justice or juvenile justice system. In that case, and it just says refer, doesn't it mean they're going to jail, but, you know, and I can think of a case this year that we did where it was like attacked, but it was, you know, and I don't think it even went any further, but is this a, a change from our normal procedure? Cause we're saying shall, I just wanna make sure we're.
And well, and does that apply to hitting a school board member, or does that apply to the firearm arson felony, I think again, because of the way this name is structured, you can't tell when shall they be referred to, it might just be, because it, clearly they should be referred to for a firearm arson or felony assault.
Right.
But if they've tripped a teacher, do we call law, like, shall, is that a shall be?
So that statutory reference says notwithstanding any other provision of law, each district's school board shall adopt rules providing that any student found to have committed any offense in statute seven eight four point oh eight one, one, two, or three.
So here's one, two, three for you.
Shall be expelled, continue working, shall be expelled or placed in an alternative school setting or other program as appropriate upon being charged with the offense. The student shall be removed from the classroom immediately and placed in an alternative school setting pending disposition.
It doesn't give a time, right?
Does not give a time.
And here's that statute.
And that, number two.
Yeah. So regular physical attack is a level four, and battery is probably a level five, since it's felony.
Battery should be probably, I think that the, the thing about physical attack is the batter, there was confusion about what it looked like, cause the law enforcement may have not been involved, but it was a physical attack on employee, cause we had that one case that was the whole and then we got into the whole battery discussion, and what was the definition based on law enforcement, and when it, and so that's why it was requested to put on there.
Physical.
And physical attack is also a Cessar code, right, PHA?
Correct.
And so the Cessar code is our component of statutes. Cause there wasn't a specific battery code, the batter, the battery was kind of, one case it said one thing, and one case it said another thing.
I was gonna put.
Could, could the, could the physical attack on an employee be a level five, or a level four is physical attack, and then you move it out of there, make it a level five, and then you've got these choices for your physical attack?
We can, for next school, you could, when we revise that student code of conduct, we can make that recommendation, cause we can move the levels on that.
Right. It just seems like a more appropriate place for this than in there. And then, if it's a level five, now it's, you know, it's definitely a step up from the level four of just regular physical attack. It's actually put in the category with weapons, bomb threat, homicide, and that's a big deal, but it gives you choices, recommending for alternative place, that recommendation for expulsion, there's no mandatory one year, it must be.
Why don't we just change the policy to reflect the statute language, shall be expelled or placed in an alternative school setting or other program as appropriate?
I like that.
I like that.
Where, where are you on that, on, in one oh six, one thousand six, one three, which?
Five.
So, I, I agree with that and I like that, but I do wanna know, what, is that sending a message, I wish Dr. Shollum was here because she was the one that was so adamant about, about that, and our employees, and the message we're sending them by, by doing that. Is there anyone else here that believes the way she does, that wants to? Her part in crime, do you have a strong opinion on this?
We have to stand up for our employees regardless, we, we have to protect our employees. So, when, when Dr. Mullins said I would hesitate putting the timeline, I, I agree with that as well. But we have to stand up for our employees, and we have to hold people accountable. I like, I'm sorry, I liked what this girlfriend was just saying, that language, I think that would align with what our, our.
So that's the language of song, so you want?
Change, I think, hold on, I wanna hear from Dr. Mullins.
Well, I, I think we do need to be very cautious. We, we have a shortage of employees right now. Teachers, counselors, substitutes, committing themselves into the learning environment. And if we send a message that students, that teachers and so on, you now have to subject yourself to potential physical harm, and we have not said a, a hard message, students, if your conduct unnecessary and unbecoming to a learning environment, puts our employees in such risk that they may blow out a knee, I don't think a year from the privilege of being in that traditional school environment is too strong of a message. Because I understand our students make bad choices and so on, but we have a, we have an obligation to make a, to, in their bad choices, send a strong message that those bad choices have some very significant consequences. I would say, although I don't know what the original intent of the policy was by any means, it's existed since my early days of an administrator, I suspect that was the intent of the message. If we, if we, I'll say, depart or waiver from that, the new practice will be less, less, less. So I caution us to, if it were a matter of, we have a student who commits battery on a school, board employee, two weeks into the school year, and we wanna make a decision to allow them to return to their traditional school at the beginning of the next school year, that's one thing. But if it's now in November.
Right.
Or January, I would really caution us. Um, and we will be challenged, if it is not in board policy, that it is a calendar year, we will put staff in a very unenviable position to have to make these, where, where, where do we stand? And so, this policy has existed for at least eighteen years, as long as I can remember being an administrator, and we have held very strong and firm to it, and we've sent a strong message to our students, no employee is gonna be jeopardized. We give them plenty of opportunity to stop, break up, to stop fighting, um, and, and I've been in every circumstance, and I imagine every administrator in here has been in every possible circumstance, we, our verbal command has stopped. Our light physical intervention has stopped, and I know, I suspect, it required a bear hug and a, to pull both male and females off of each other. And only by the grace of God, I wasn't injured. So, I just caution us that, I, I understand the interest, but my concern is for our employees, that they will be drawn into an environment that they have to go in, cause we have to protect our kids. And if our kids refuse to respond to first verbal and then light physical intervention, and we now have to go in and physically restrain kids to protect them at our own physical detriment, that's just not right.
I think we also have to make sure that stu, all students are treated the same way.
Absolutely.
I think rather the exceptions remain the exceptions and not make the exception the rule.
That makes sense.
Isn't there room, and I, I think we've come a long way in our expulsion process in the last year or so. Isn't there room where there are extenuating circumstances for it not to be called physical attack on an employee, but to be called something else in those situations, where yes, maybe an employee was hurt, but maybe it truly was absolutely, you know, the, the student accidentally put their foot out when the teacher was walking by, and there was real, there, the behavior was not such that you would necessarily anticipate harm to anyone? Does that make sense where I'm coming from, like, there are.
I think, I think, I, I can't think of an instance where our administrators didn't use some judicious, you know, some, some reasonable consideration in defining what the actual act was. The only ones that I can think coming to us were those scenarios where physical intervention was required to stop students from doing something they knew they shouldn't be doing.
Is there a difference though, and this was the argument that day, a difference between a student saying, I hate you, charging towards you and trying to punch you in the face as a teacher, and a student who's trying to punch another student in the face, and the teacher gets knocked, knocked over, hit, is there a difference in that consequence?
In a way.
So, so what's the difference then between a, a child who is fighting with another child, and the teacher goes to intervene to break up the fight so that neither of the students are injured, and gets injured in the process?
Well, the consequence is different, one's a level four, one's an automatic year right now. If the teacher gets involved and they get hit, it's way different, if you hit another student, you are a level four, and you can have all these different things happen. Right, if the teacher gets involved and gets hit.
But then a, but a level four is, could be a year also.
Could be, yes, but isn't an, there are different consequences, so as soon as that teacher tries to break it up and accidentally gets hit, now it's a whole different, all year.
As it should be, really.
I, I mean.
Yeah, I really, I have to, and, and I say that because I've had multiple instances in schools in my district lately where we have had staff members. Yeah, I really, I have to, a- and I say that because I've had multiple instances in schools in my district lately where we have had staff members who have been out, who, who have been seriously injured intervening in student fights. And I feel like our students need to, in fact, my suggestion was, boy, wouldn't it be great if we could publicize these?
Well, I was gonna say, if we're gonna stick with this, I think this, we need to be a lot more loud, vocal, and bold with parents and students, to say, this is our policy and we are not gonna tolerate it anymore, if this is a real issue.
So I'll just tell you guys, when I was a teacher, um, there were many fights that I would break up, where the actual teachers that were there that would have been armed, stood by the sidelines and wouldn't get involved because they were afraid to get hit.
Can I just say, would have?
So they would, so there's two kids fighting, other teachers are standing by, and I'd rush in and grab the kids. It happened all the time. And I'll tell you, if we didn't have something to protect those individuals from going in, you'd see less and less of it, and we are actually creating a situation where two kids will just continue to fight and put them in more harm's way rather than putting them away there. I, you know, I, I went around in circles about this, because the situation that we had before was where a kid not just tripped, but did something else that was just stupid. But he did harm the, the teacher, so where does that go? But I will tell you, like you said, Dr. Mullins, we have to protect our teachers, and if we don't, then they're gonna be less likely to get involved and we're actually gonna hurt our kids more.
Let's say teachers and staff, because on that one, it was the SRO, you know, it can be anybody that's working.
Yeah. Could you imagine a bus driver?
Somebody jumping out.
And we can't forget that even an act, the, being, receiving an accidental swing or a hit from a student as the result, they are choosing to engage in behavior they know is wrong and unacceptable, and it has the potential outcome of harming others, even beyond who they're intending to harm.
Yep.
And this is not an accidental, this is not a oops, this is not a oh, sorry, this is a, I'm making an intentional decision to engage in behavior I know is wrong. There's no question, our students know that physically engaging with another student is wrong. And there is no question in my mind that they know that the school staff are obligated to intervene in that instance if they don't, if they don't stop. So I, I don't think our staff should have to be concerned that we won't enforce a very strict and firm policy on the consequences of that and with the message that we're going to hold students additionally accountable. Now, we try interventions first. Stop, stop, stop. We try some light physical intervention to protect us first. Only when they have then refused to respond to two intentional interventions, and now the harm of the individuals engaged is in jeopardy, do we physically have to go in. Uh, but at that point, we've tried twice, reasonable means for them to stop. We, we need to stand behind our employees and ensure that we will enforce a strict policy.
Oh, and really too, I think we have to consider the, we just have to send a s- a strong message regarding fights in schools, because kids look at it, especially, you know, we, we saw our discipline data, and when we're seeing spikes in discipline data, we know like middle school year, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade. We, I think we are somewhat desensitized, because we hear about fights all the time, right? But the reality is that any one of those fights could result in, in the death of a student. You know, if, if somebody gets punched and they fall and they hit their head on the bench that's in the breezeway, or they, their head hits the concrete wall and they suffer brain damage, or they, kids at that age don't have the cognitive ability to think through that and understand the potential impact of their choice. So I think we have to do our best to really make that very clear to them. This is like, this could have life-changing implications for you all.
And, and just on it, we're only thinking of the, we think that it's only the few cases that come to, you know, administrative hearing. The reality is, is fights are occurring, students are engaging, and we're intervening verbally and or with light physical intervention, and it's over. Those never come to the realization. So it doesn't go from zero to ninety every instance. There are many instances, I would say the vast majority, where students do respond. They do put up their hands, or at least one does. They put up, they understand what self-defense is. It's not fighting back, it's backing up. And that's when we can intervene very quickly and very effectively. So, um,
I'm just sick and tired of these kids coming into our school and creating a ruckus.
Being disrespectful.
The fact is, they think that they rule the school, that they are in control, that they can disrespect our people, and that they can do all this stuff, and it just needs to come in there. And I remember being at Space Coast, Mr. Spinner would hit hard right at the beginning of the year, send them all, and then send a message, and it was clean slate for the rest of the year. Set a good message all the way through. So I agree with him, especially if you've had some situations up north where it just keeps happening. And unless we just, I mean, it, it's ridiculous, but I agree with you.
So we want to leave G, just as it is then?
Um, except for I, I didn't get answered to my question.
Which one?
Why we're adding the shall be referred to the criminal justice or juvenile justice system. So, Dr. Fontaine, if you can help me, um, she, if we, you know, leave it the way that it was for, you know, laying hands on a district employee here, but why adding the student shall be referred to criminal justice or juvenile justice? There are certain circumstances I know automatically would be referred, but, you know, there, I can think of at least one, one I sat on, that I don't know that it would necessarily have been referred to law enforcement. I think it's referring to E, isn't it?
That was already in the Ola language, I'm looking for it.
Okay.
I believe battery on a school official is a law enforcement.
Automatic, but is a physical attack, because now we've added physical attack, and then the next line says that they shall be referred to criminal justice system if it's a physical attack, which is not battery.
See, the way it's a subject, the way it was just.
Well, any Cessar code, you know, we have to report it to law enforcement, we actually have to place on AS four hundred, uh, mark that yes, we talked with them and they filed a case,
We have to consult. It's better. It's better.
See, we consulted with them, or no, we didn't talk to the law enforcement.
So referred can.
So could just be a consultation.
We can just do consultation.
So referred may.
Be consultation.
A consultation, or it could be something where the law enforcement agent says, yes, well, I need to do a case in the law office. They have that choice.
Okay. So it doesn't automatically mean they're gonna come to arrest them, or do investigation, or whatever.
And that can be the SRO, referred to criminal justice, that means you just consulted with the SRO.
Yes.
If we can still go back to our one year, please, it wasn't done.
Instead of shall.
I think we all agree we want to send a loud, bold, clear message, but three of us at least agreed that we were gonna violate our own policy at least one time. Are we okay with that in the future, if something like that comes before us again?
Yeah, I am. I, I think that things are not always.
Because if staff doesn't, doesn't take the proper measures to make sure that they, that, you know, and we violate this stuff, we, we.
Then you're back to what Dr. Mullins was talking about. We've changed what those hearings with the expulsion are supposed to be about. It's an administrative hearing that's supposed to see if they.
I think if we put something in policy that says the board can overrule the, the one year of the recommendation, we invite ourselves for a lot more expulsion hearings.
Yeah, I do.
There's, I don't know if this is the right time to bring this up, there is a nagging, wondering I've had about administrative hearings. If there ever comes a time that, because there's only three board members present in that due process hearing, if only two board members approve to amend board policy, that is a minority of the board as five, which would not necessarily, I don't think constitute the ability to override the policy. So there's that.
So it has to be consensus.
It would have to be cons- it would have to be unanimous in the hearing.
And we as a whole approve of every termination that is, that are expulsion, don't they come back to us at the board?
No.
No.
That one is a, a free panel.
Well, they just totally do.
Do other districts only have three people in their expulsion?
Other districts hire a hearing officer.
Well, that's so smart.
That's right.
I've talked about this around the state, and they're like, I should have decided on expansion.
What are you talking about?
So, yeah, most, most districts hire or get volunteer attorneys to serve as the impartial hearing officers that are not tied to the district, to then, um, hear the cases and then bring forth a recommendation to school board for approval.
So it's a little, it still comes back to the board, but.
Right, but the board doesn't, uh, three of you, they'll just sit there to make a decision.
I like a safe part of it.
Which, which one do you look in? Which format?
I prefer the hearing officer, because I think it removes you all from making that decision.
Yeah, me too.
But it also removes you all from having the authority to make that decision. I mean, you can ultimately not support, you know, the recommendation of the hearing officer, but it removes you, it removes, it's, it's an impartial hearing officer that we hopefully would be fine to volunteer to serve in that capacity, um, and do that, so.
Something to look at.
Mm-hmm. Quickly. Just opened up twenty cans of orange in this one policy.
If, with a hearing officer, it does likely uphold the, I believe, the intent of a hearing, which is to evaluate.
If they follow the.
Mm-hmm.
If they follow the policy, which is why this has to be exactly how we want it to be, not, oh, we'll make it, but then we'll just not follow it sometimes. I'm not comfortable with that.
If policy.
Right.
If we think that's it, and that's it, then when situations like the one that came before us, and we have to give it to him too, just like everyone else.
I see, I just don't think life is all black and white. I just don't.
Then you should want to amend this policy.
Yeah, I don't know how to amend it to make it so we're not, you know, hurting our teachers. I, I don't know what, I guess to me, if we have to do this and not an outside person.
Well, it seems to me that if, I'm gonna think out loud, that's what it's dangerous. If a student is identified to have committed battery on a school board official, and we have defined consequences for that, we'll assume a calendar year. And a parent challenges that and requests a hear, a due process hearing before the board. The board's determination is, is it a battery on a school board official or not? If it is, then it's upheld. If it's not, then it doesn't mean the student can be scot-free, it means it didn't, the board does not agree it grows to the, the level of battery on a school board official. It could then be reduced to physical attack, in which case we could reevaluate the term of the, and therefore, the board is not making a decision on the consequences. They're making a decision on the evidence of the charge. Does that make sense?
Except if we put, and we add physical attack into F, then we just took away that option.
Correct. We, we would.
So. And the definition of battery is not with the law enforcement battery as a whole, that's why, that's why we came up here.
That's why there's a distinction.
Cause they think, well, my child didn't get, the charges were not battery. Yeah, but physical attack, I think, I just would not take that out. I think that's important.
Well, I think if there's a physical attack on a
Isn't that a battery?
elected official or school district teacher, administrator, or other district personnel, I can't imagine that that's different.
I think the problem was that the physical attack talks about intentional, and the battery was like, just any kind of touch.
So there's a, in, in the, in the expulsion binder that she's looking at, there's a definition of Cessar codes, and physical attack will have that definition.
Right, that's what I'm looking at. Fractal and intentional striking on another person against, as of her will, or the intentional causing bodily harm to an individual, must be serious enough to warrant consulting law enforcement and result in less serious bodily injury, defined as bodily injury which requires immediate first aid or subsequent medical attention, to distinguish from fighting. Or incident as battery, only when the force or violence is carried out against a person who is not fighting back.
Battery is the physical use or force of violence by an individual against any other individual when the force or violence is carried on this person who is not fighting back. The attack must be serious enough to warrant consulting law enforcement, result in less serious bodily injury. More serious bodily injuries defined as death or bodily injury which involves substantial.
So is there a charge less than battery or physical attack that would apply in a situation where, say, perhaps a staff member was?
Tapped on the back of the neck by a grade eight grader?
Right, that was still an intentional act.
It wasn't, it wasn't intentional act, right.
And so you can go back to intent, but then you have the doctrine of transferred intent too. I mean to hit Dr. Fontaine, but instead, Dr. Mullins is here and I actually miss her and, because I'm not a good, you know, I did intend to, sorry.
All right, move, and then, and then.
And that's what happens a lot in our cases too. They're intending on going after the other student with whom they're fighting, and then they hit the administrator instead.
See, I think that still needs to be as serious.
Yeah, I, I agree, going after it.
Yep.
And in the past situations where the kid, they've separated the kids, and then this kid still can't let it go and has pushed staff over and knocked them out to go and after.
That's, that would be the case.
And in which case, that staff member ended up blowing out the knee, no, was a back injury.
All right, Ms. Belford, where are you on all this? What do you want to do with it?
Let's go down the line.
I think that we need to keep serious penalties for injuring our staff members, or fellow students for that matter. I think it goes back to what Dr. Mullins was saying, that the, the board can always choose in an expulsion hearing to say, no, this wasn't physical attack or battery, it was something else. In which case, there would be more leniency in the consequences.
Okay. So no adjustment, except for, um, Ms. Campbell's that keeps pointing out, because it still doesn't make sense the way this thing is ordered. What do you think?
We need to reformat.
Reformate, you can reformate.
Yeah. So that everything applies to the.
So we're sure, because G doesn't have to do with F, it needs to be under F.
Right, so like two, this, this two here, right, this is gonna become three.
Right. Okay.
Yes?
Yes.
Yep.
And then this is gonna become
C.
This is gonna become C, entitled threats to school safety, we'll add in a title, right?
C. Okay. That makes sense.
And then this is, this becomes one.
And then that becomes one.
One.
And then we have A, B, C, D. And then this would be
That'd be two.
Two.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Now we're standing. Two, and then this would become
That's part of the, two, two, that's part of two.
Two A.
This is, this G is part of two.
That's not part of one, that's not part of one, that has nothing to do with the firearms arson felony.
That's already addressed higher up.
Yeah.
That'll be referred to law enforcement?
Yeah. To a law firm.
Because if you make that a two, then it's, then it's, you're only referred for attack on a employee.
Yeah, I guess we need to know why G was pulled out of F. And if we, we added the.
It was all put together. Because it was also, because I think, because it was lost.
Okay.
Well, we wanted to.
Well, why doesn't it need to have it be a sub? Why can't it just be included in the paragraph without?
Right.
We can.
Move it back to the bottom of the list.
Yeah, that's with that.
But they sort of has nothing to do with E.
Yeah, if it doesn't have anything to do with E, it needs to go, it needs to be a part of the.
No, it is, it is part of E.
It is part of E.
That's rather, how could it be F or G? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Oh, okay.
It's part of. F and, F and G both refer to E.
Mm-hmm.
So if you look at.
So they need to be subs, not new, not the same level, they need to be a sub level.
E would be.
So maybe
Right.
What it was.
Maybe capital F needs to be lowercase f.
Oh, underneath the, okay.
Yes, they need to be subs, since they said, um.
Don't just leave it back in the air, right?
And then capital G needs to be
A small s.
a standalone in E.
Standalone in E. Oh my gosh. Okay, do you guys understand what we need to do?
Yes, and we're coming back.
Can you handle that offline access?
Add a couple of thing, other things on this policy though, before we move on.
Now, we're not even ready to go there yet, because we still need to get everybody's input. Ms. Belford wants to keep it as is, Ms. McDougal, listen, now we're talking about the one year.
Okay.
On your, you know what, I, I think we need to keep it, because I, it is a serious offense if our staff gets hits, or even our students, it's, there should be no fighting, it's, that should be really, I hate zero policies, but that really should be a, a zero policy.
It's all under the zero tolerance, subhead, I think. Ms. Campbell, keep it? Keepin' it.
Yep.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
That was a fifty-five minute discussion worth.
Still the same place. We still have a lot of other things to come too.
I know, but this one was a long time coming, so. Okay, now we'll start with any other issues we have on this policy, Ms. Belford.
Yes, it is.
Okay, B to B.
B to B.
Making a threat or false report is defined in seven ninety point one six two, seven ninety point one six three involving school or, school or school personnel's property, transportation, or school-sponsored activity. I'm questioning whether we need to include, although it is included in the statute, if you go to the statute, the actual policy language doesn't refer to people. It only refers to making a threat or false report involving a school, school personnel's property, transportation, or an activity.
School personnel, school-sponsored activity.
So it doesn't include threats to students or, um,
This is where that came from.
So if you look into seven ninety point one six two and seven ninety point one six three, they actually refer to people. Which are, I mean, I know we're probably covered in statute, but.
There's one six two. There's one six two, there it is, one six two.
Were you talking about?
Were you talking about people as far as their property is?
So you. Yeah, well, it says, or concerning the use of firearms in a violent manner against a person or persons, um, whereas our policy language doesn't include people.
Judge, judge.
Okay.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It only includes the school, the property, transportation.
So use of.
Seven ninety one six two.
Or a school sponsored activity.
Yeah, it's in there, yeah, but she, she's asking for, she just used the wording and had it on here, even though the, you referenced the policy.
Against a person or person.
Says, against a person or intended damage to any property of any person.
But it says that's defined by chapter seven ninety, which one is this one that, is this with people, what number is this one?
Seven ninety point one six three is the one with the people.
Both of them, I think, actually reference.
So you're, are you suggesting that we need to add that? Uh, something.
I just think it's odd that we're not saying that if they make a threat against a, like, if I say, I'm gonna come and shoot Mrs. Smith, it is covered by statute, but it's not specifically addressed in our policy language, because we don't say anything about people.
So you want us to talk about people? Does that make sense?
So we took the language right out of the one, the statute, from one thousand six point one.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Yeah, we took it out of.
Exactly word for word.
I mean, we took it out of, I think, this one, or section five.
No, you had it before.
I know I had it before. Just go back. Zero policies, is that one? I have another one.
It's the same wording, but it's the one that you had to have these links open.
One thousand six point oh seven or oh nine.
That's the one that you had, and then you can click on the links.
Yep.
You're just asking to consider putting language that, that people added to there.
Yeah, I'm like, I, it's covered because there's statutory reference there that includes people in the statute.
Correct.
But it's not in policy.
It just seems strange to me that we would eliminate the reference to people in our policy language. Seems to me like it would be much more clear if someone were to question us, rather than saying, oh, well, yeah, we didn't put it in policy, but it's included in statute. Just to be easier to say. Go back up just a bit, Amy.
Right there, right there.
There, there it is, it's three.
So, if, yeah, she's saying, right, we have the same language.
We do.
We just have, she wants to add a reference to the people that's on the, the chapter that, defined by those chapters.
It's seven ninety point one six two, that's three, yeah.
Of course.
Cause we're gonna have to work on, we'll have to work, spend a little bit of language, to see if we can do that.
Do we, do you guys have a lot more than these we got on this one policy?
Okay. I have one other question.
Do you have a lot more that needs to be done on this policy?
Nope.
Matt, do you have anything?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, I'll just go through this, yes, go ahead, Miss, I'm sorry.
All right, so my next question is on C. That whole paragraph there seems to me as though it is saying that the superintendent can consider an alternative, right? He can, he can look at it on a case-by-case basis and request that the board modify the requirement for expulsion by sending a student to a disciplinary program or second chance school, which sounds to me like basically what our expulsion hearings are.
Mm-hmm.
Right. But then it goes on to say, the superintendent's request for modification must be in writing and may only be presented to the board for consideration if the student and/or the student's parent, legal guardian agree in writing to accept the recommendation. So that means that he can't bring a recommendation to us at an expulsion hearing without the parents for signing off on the recommendation?
So this is language that has been in our policy before, and we just moved it up. So I don't know from a practical and historical perspective what has happened in those instances.
So it's always.
It's not practical or it's not historical.
Okay. Good to know. That's why we look at policies.
Having sat out there and having sat there.
So, do you, do you guys understand what I'm saying though? It almost sounds like in order for him to bring a recommendation for an alternative placement, it has to be signed off on by the parents, and if the parents are signing off on it, then it would not come to the board.
Mm-hmm.
Because the parents have already signed off on it.
Or.
Well, like, for example, when we've had kids who, who came, but they're already enrolled in the ALC before they come.
They've already agreed.
Parents have already agreed at least temporarily.
That's how I was reading it.
To do that. Cause they're at the ALC, so they had to agree at least at some point.
Well, some.
But they're at the ALC on a ten day pending.
Right.
Right.
Jane?
We will work on it.
Okay.
I think I can bring some historical background to that.
Thank you.
Robin?
It used to be that if a student committed an expel-act, then they were going to face expulsion, complete removal from school, unless during the administrative hearing of the principal of the school, the parent agrees to go to the alternative learning center in lieu of expulsion. I believe that's what that's talking about.
So that.
That does make sense.
Technically.
Can we recall those days?
Yes.
So, okay, so I'm interpreting this.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, so the way I'm reading is, it says, the superintendent may consider a one-year expulsion requirement a case-by-case request of the board modify their requirement by sending a student. So instead of going to the ALC, the parent may put in writing, they wanna go to home education or private school in lieu of the alternative. And we, cause we do have that process, they have to put in writing to us, and actually Stephanie Sullivan's office or Jane Klein's office that approves
Right.
in lieu of the alternative learning center for that period, they may choose to go to home education or private school.
The board doesn't approve that though, right?
The board doesn't approve any of these things. It doesn't approve going to the ALC either, unless it's, comes in for us.
But the.
Right.
But the superintendent. So where do you see the boards approving that?
Uh, fifth line down.
Middle.
Yeah.
Board may approve the request if it's determined to be in the best interest of the student.
That's the part. You kind of superintendent.
And then fourth line be presented to the board for consideration. So I think the very least, we have some cloudiness in that section.
Yeah, because if they don't request a hearing, it doesn't come for approval at all.
No, it just, it just goes through the assistant superintendent and they approve home education or private school in lieu of the other.
Or personal.
Right, or if they just accept, or if they just accept going to the ALC without a hearing.
That's just home education. Correct.
I believe, I believe Mr. Novelli's explanation is correct. A student commits an expellable offense, we can, by statute, move forward with an expulsion and never provide an alternative, an ALC placement opportunity. We have that statutory authority. This is saying that the superintendent can, with the parent's agreement, not proceed with expulsion if they will choose to participate in the alternative learning center, but we have since had a couple other derivatives of that to include private school, homeschool.
And the language with the board needs to come out, so, and because we're over an hour on this one policy, I'm gonna say, let's do another work session on this policy. You guys take it and go.
Correct. Yeah.
Yes, so we could work, we can bring it back to workshop, we're gonna have to, um, the, the most important part of this policy is your Cessar K, because it was enacted under MSD and uh, the superintendent and the school board face losing their salaries and we don't have this in policy. So that's why we brought that forward.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
No wonder it just got warming here.
This is the new requirement, so when the state says, do your school board have you adopt your comment that requires the timely and accurate reporting for Cessar, we can say, yes, we have. So this has to move forward this way. We can try to work out this issue um, and bring you back a suggested language um, at our remote workshop, but we kinda have to move forward on this one.
When does this, when does this need to be done?
So, uh, if you look at the calendar, hang on a second, it's on the front page there, this is coming back to you on November, or October twenty ninth um, for approval on November nineteenth.
So, um. Do you need us to meet again in between?
No, we, we've already advertised for this schedule, so we have to stay on this schedule.
Okay.
But, so, I guess the question is, do we, can we provide enough?
We can, we can work on this language and probably work with you individually, so that we can make sure that this, this is good.
Okay.
And then we can, um, but we're gonna have to quickly, cause we have to upload it on.
Clean it up the way you think it should be cleaned up, email it to all of us, we can individually email areas that we still have concern. It sounds like we're all agreeing, I don't think we have to meet to discuss to disagree, we just, we need it.
No, I want. That's good.
And if I remember correctly, we can make technical changes at the workshop.
We can make technical changes, right, but we can't make any substantive.
These are like, somebody, who knows.
Right.
So this might be more of a substantive.
I'm confident our staff will get it perfect.
I go.
Okay, okay. But what we're most worried about is this Cessar report. We need to move on.
We really, 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 really need to go.
Yeah, let's do it. You go work on it now.
I was gonna say.
That'd be great. We thought it was gonna be an easy one, cause it was all legislative changes. We'll be back. Pam, I have, um, somehow disconnected, can you tell me how to reconnect?
Sure. Okay, we are now gonna hear from Mr. Novelli and Kristy Rodriguez on policy sixty-three twenty, sixty-three thirty, sixty-four twenty-three, sixty-four sixty, and sixty-five forty. And we're gonna do a presentation.
No, I figured that.
Well, but sixty-three twenty is the only one that has anything, everything else is repealed.
That's really, yeah.
Yes, everything else is repealed.
Which is like.
Yeah, all the others repeal the only one.
That should be best.
Right, do you have copies? We have spares.
Do you want hard copies?
We have it online, anybody needs a hard copy.
It was online.
Give him the prize for the longest policy.
Right?
But you know what?
It's a good one though.
If you printed those all out, I'll take one. I'll take, I'll take.
Okay.
Cause you know.
It might be easier to flip back and forth if you're doing that, you'll all try to follow along the best I can.
It might be, yeah. I might need some of the public to sleep tonight, cause I'm turning into bed too.
So you could put it asleep.
All right, so, you ready?
Thank you.
Yes.
Great, okay.
Oh, I thought we were all gonna.
She's got a whole stack over there.
She's got a whole stack.
Would you like a hard copy?
Cindy.
Sure.
What else are you gonna do with them?
Ready to kill the trees?
Ready to kill the trees.
I know.
There you go.
That's John Cretsch, trust in those trees and keep growing.
Thank you, sir. Hey, I have a bunch of acres planted in pine trees, so you'll get heat from that, I work.
All right, so sixty-three twenty, policies being revised to clarify and define the general procurement requirements, procurement methods, cone of silence, agreements, approval and signature authority, and authority to bar or suspend and other changes in compliance with applicable Florida law. Particular areas of revision include the following, title change from purchasing to procurement and contract services in order to more accurately identify the purpose of the policy, defining procurement methods, including competitive solicitations, alternative source contracting, direct negotiations, competitive solicitations waived or not required, electronic procurements, federal grant funds, purchase cards, purchase orders, advance payments, cone of silence, solicitation of award protest, defining agreements and required approvals, reviews, setting forth approval and signature authority for board and delegate, delegated authority, and establishing authority to depar and suspend. New revised policy will incorporate board policies sixty-three thirty, sixty-four twenty-three, sixty-four sixty, and sixty-five forty, which are being recommended for repeal, to incorporate all procurement related policies into one policy for transparency and consistency, and because our council said it was a good idea. And so, instead of the five former policies, we now have the one that incorporates all of those things, called sixty-three twenty. And it also includes language recommended from the OLA, and it also includes putting into policy a lot of our administrative procedures for transparency's sake, and again, at council suggestion, normally we don't like to put a lot of administrative procedures into policy, but in this case, Amy recommended that we be very clear about what it is that we are doing in this world of procurement. Uh, last week, also sent to the board, um, an overview of this information to help you decipher through it that Kristy wrote, I thought she did a nice job with that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for that, yeah.
And, um, we can go through sixty-three twenty and point out a few things for you, or we can take a look at, uh, concerns or questions.
I'd love for you to look at sixty-three twenty as it is right now.
I have one question for you, Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Um, we have a couple policies now where we have put the administrative procedures into the policy. Is that guidance from the OLA, or is that something we've decided to do?
It's, it's a little bit of both. So, when it's something like, um, the textbook adoptions, where our public has to, there's a whole process in place, like, they have to know what they need to do to challenge that textbook adoption process, then that's important to put into policy, so they don't have to dig and find it. Same thing with procurement. They have to know, our vendors have to know that we have, you can do an RFP, what's an RFP? Well, I'm so glad you asked, cause now it's in the policy, what's an ITN? There are still some administrative procedures and nitty gritty things that procurement's gonna, Kristy's gonna develop to, to make sure that it all goes, but this is codifying our practices and our, um, and the the procurement methods that we've been using into policy, so it's all there and it's so transparent and clear, so.
So my next question is, it was hard for me on the textbook adoption one.
Mm-hmm.
And we all, and through discussions and dealing with some people in the public that were trying to, we'd be like, no, big D with little one, with a one with little E F G, no, not that, on page four, it was so hard to, and I, this one's even longer. And I'm already like, no, the little E that's under the four, could we be doing these almost like statute is done, sixty-three twenty, and then subsection them?
Mm-hmm.
Five, ten, fifteen, twenty, something like that, dot fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't that be easier?
We have, I think, we could do whatever we want to.
Are we then gonna go back and change that on all of our policies, so they're all formatted the same?
We don't have a whole lot where we have administrative.
We don't have any, our policies, our current policies are not formatted at all, so, you know, we have, like, the one before, it was six, seven pages of just paragraph, paragraph, paragraph.
But we've done what, like, thirty?
We've done sixty-seven last fiscal hearing, thirty-seven so far this year.
But, but we only have, how many do we have with administrative procedures?
Not very many, not very, it's just that, just the textbook adoption ones.
So, that's the only other one that I feel like is just, that you have to refer to in the public a lot, and that's the purpose of putting administrative procedure in there, is the public is gonna be, you know, they're gonna call, they're gonna have questions about subsection.
And this one's a little bit different too, because this one is incorporating those other policies that the OLA says are the ones that we have that are two or three sentences long into one.
And it has page numbers.
Right.
Which is helpful too. I don't know, it was just, it's, it was a thought when I looked at it. Everybody else.
So what were our options then, Mr. Novelli, or is telling us we can just go through the highlights, or?
Yeah, we can point out a few things, uh, for you, if you'd like to, uh.
Sure.
Okay. So, uh, first of all, um, in the very first page, it talks about, um, responsibilities there, and, uh, we're referring to the procurement and distribution services department. So part of this policy is actually a name change for the department that Kristy leads from the old-fashioned purchasing warehouse to procurement and distribution services, which more accurately reflects the work that they do. That would also affect, uh, the job description titles of free individuals. But, uh, that's written into the policy as well, I want to point that out to you. The policy itself was changed from purchasing to procurement and contracting. Some other things that are worth pointing out, I think, um, go into the situation on protest barn. So, I'm on page eleven of the redline version.
So, a lot of this, just to clarify too, a lot of this is, what is an ITV, how does it differ from the RFP? A lot of it is definitions based, and it's more, um,
Mm-hmm.
Cause a lot of times you say, just do a competitive solicitation, but people don't know if that means an ITV and RFP, and what does that mean, so this is basically setting forth some of those, um, terminology that we frequently use in procurement, so that the public knows what it is. Um, so that's what the first couple pages actually are, um, is, is more, um, definitions based, so people can actually converse with us on their particular questions they might have, so. But then moving forward, then I'll move to, to, what are your pages, what'd you say, page eleven?
Page eleven, yeah. Page eleven, yeah. Alright, in this section there about protest bond, we've utilized some state statute figures there that apply in capital outlay situations. And we've applied this at the OLA's recommendation to all bond situations. That's a difference from what we had before. And the difference, what we had before in some situations, and this is because it just goes back so long since this has been touched, but as little as, correct me if I'm wrong, five hundred dollars sometimes in a bond. And of course, when the bond is that small in these situations, it could really hold up our ability to move forward. And again, Amy recommended that we go with this situation. Would you want to speak to that a little?
The procurement, the bond levels? So this isn't aligned with what other districts do and also local government agencies do. Sometimes our contractors may do a bid protest just because they don't want, they didn't get it, and so they're upset. We want to make sure that those bid protests, if they are true bid protests, that we can evaluate them accordingly. So if they put up the bond, and not just afford the bid, the procurement process, but if they put up the bond, we can take a look at it. That bond just stays there. If, if we look at everything and we decide that, oh, you know what, there was something wrong with our scope, or there was something wrong with our processes, we can reject all bids and resolicite and they get their bond back. It's just kind of a security thing, but.
So any amount of the contract, the minimum is gonna be twenty-five thousand dollars?
For projects over five hundred thousand.
Go ahead.
Oh, keep reading.
And then five percent for the others. And so the danger, Amy, with a five hundred dollar bond, if we, even if we were to win, that it wouldn't cover.
It wouldn't cover the costs.
It would pay the costs of attorney that we would need to fight that.
Right. Right.
In that situation.
And I don't know where the five hundred dollars came from. It was just.
Five hundred years ago.
It's a long time.
Right, the max of five thousand currently, which is also nothing to us yet.
Even five thousand is very little when you talk about attorney fees and going through one of these protests. There anything else there, Kristy, that we want to point out? Is there anything else that we missed?
So all of the delegated authority for signature approval authority is codified in the policy, which right now it's just kinda practice.
We get a lot of questions, well, who should sign this? How could you ask? Because this actually figures that out. And in the past, we just looked to see who signed it before and kind of go by those guidelines, but this definitely sets forth, so.
I wonder how we've done business. So well for so long around here.
It's, we've done a good job, but I think it's really good to have the expectation set forth.
And also the cone of silence, right now, that has just been in our ITV and our, you know, our template solicitation documents. And of course, our training to vendor and selection committee members, but now it'll be in policy, which really gives it a lot more.
Well, and for you all, too, you need to know that once a solicitation has been issued and you get a question, you need to direct it back to procurement.
So I've had a question on that because I don't know that we are necessarily notified that it has been, that like, we never get a, hey, you're in a cone of silence, and here are the types of companies that you should be avoiding at the moment. Like, that has never been communicated to us.
I'll let Kristy take that one.
So that, yes, that has not been our current practice, but in other agencies that I've worked at, we do issue, you know, either a monthly report. So that is something that we could provide and start.
How often do we have people protesting bids?
Not since I've been here, I think I've had two.
Because I've never been notified in three years that that's been going on.
But the cone of silence applies to all competitive bidding, not, yeah, but not just a protest, to all bidding.
Right.
Right.
So. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If you can describe the cone of silence, and this is something I've brought up before, is that when we are in the process of bidding and solicitation, any of the vendors that are within that bid, we are not allowed to speak to. Are we allowed to speak to vendors that did not respond to the bid? And where does that cone of silence fall there? And that, that would be a question. For instance, we had a pharmacy bid that went out, and only like, three companies responded. I understand the cone of silence is for those three companies that responded to the RFP and said that they would present. But what about the fifty other pharmacy companies that did not? Does that make sense to you?
Like, if you're just going to get advice?
No, I wanted to call and ask them why they didn't, why they didn't submit.
The window's closed, I would think you'd be calling.
Question is, is if they did not submit their proposal by the date of submission, could we reach out to them if they were not part of the solicitation process to ask them why they did not? That was a.
The cone of silence actually extends until the board approves a contract.
But I think it only responds to the companies that are within the bid.
Well, I think, you know, the language specifically says a potential vendor, service provider, bidder, lobbyist, or consultant and the staff of the district, or a board member, a board member or a member elect. I think you have to remember kind of the intent of this language there is to protect the integrity of the process. Make sure everybody's receiving the same information and also the appearance. Because if somebody sees, or hears about, or sees, you know, a board member or a district staff member talking to a vendor, even if they didn't bid, because, you know, sometimes people don't always know who responded, they could assume what that conversation may be. And if the conversation wasn't recorded or anything, there could just be an appearance of.
What kind of an advantage would you get from a pers, a company that did not respond to the bid? What would they be gaining from a conversation from us?
I would just say that, I mean, my, yeah, my recommendation would just be that procurement can always reach out and, you know, that is common practice. If we especially expected a response from a vendor and then they didn't respond, or maybe we weren't satisfied with the number of responses, I mean, that's, that's totally normal practice for us to reach out and, you know, was there something concerning?
So we ask you to reach out, say that, here's a question, please do that. That's perfect.
Because even if the board has awarded it, there could be a bid protest, and we could have to reject all bids and resolicite. So we want to make sure that appearance is not there.
And, and I think that that avenue is perfect because we can ask those questions through you. And then you can have them respond, which is completely, and then I think there was a question that said, how do we know which vendors are in? I, you know, Dr. Blackford did a good job. He basically said, any vendors that come talk to you, have them come talk to you. And I think that that's, that's a practice that I started doing, is that if we start having these vendors come to us, I just turn around and send them. So that, that's for other board members, I think.
Can we get regular updates so we have somebody else on?
So, uh, we've, in the past, I've seen districts do like a little, hey, dear board members, by the way, the following solicitations are being released. And give you the topic so that you know if it's school buses, you know, those kind of things. We can give you the solicitation number and the name.
Right, absolutely. We could even have it just be a smart sheet link, and then we could periodically send the link.
No, we won't look at it.
Okay.
So we could put it on the website.
We're trying to go electronic as much as possible, so.
Electronic is great, but it has to go to a red doc, so it'll just sit out there.
Well, she could always send you an email and say the smart sheet's been updated.
Or we get, do we have a link on the website for open solicitations?
Should.
Like, would that be something that they would send?
Yeah, I mean, it's our vendor link, but in a format that's easy.
Right, so they can look and see.
Absolutely. Put the link in the email. You don't have to log in or remember your password. That's what, that's what we need.
Because we use DemandStar, we use work.
Can you include Pam on that, please?
We use a different one, too.
Vendor link.
Yeah, we don't use DemandStar anymore. We use vendor link for everything.
So like, once a month, quarterly, what are we looking at? What can we expect?
I just whenever, do you do them in batches, or is it just, you're every day, you're sending stuff out? All day, every day.
Every day.
And it's all.
I think monthly, probably. Let's just see how that goes. If it's, if it's too much on you, let us know. If it's.
Couldn't the superintendent include a link in his monthly update?
Yes, that's perfect. That.
Got it?
Good.
You can tell if people read it, but they don't read incredibly smart.
So, can I ask, can I ask a clarifying question real quick? Board policy sixty, vendor relations and consultant agreements, what I'm hearing you guys say is that's been wrapped into sixty-three twenty that we're going over now. And we're getting rid of it. But I didn't see anywhere where it talks about any of those vendor relations and consulting agreements inside of this policy. Could you show me where in this new one those are at? Because I scanned this thing.
Right, so the consultant agreement policy right now specifically talks about training and advising. And training and advising would be under professional services. Let me find the page number. Page five.
Okay.
In the red line? Correct. Professional services, J, little J. So that's where it talks about lectures by individual.
What number? I don't know.
Page five.
Page five at the bottom.
I thought page number four. Four J.
So we're in the redline draft. Sorry, I'm getting there.
The last paragraph on page five.
J. At the bottom of page.
We were talking in the other ones about consultant agreements, when they, when they have a consultant that comes to the superintendent up to certain many hours and all that stuff, is that wiped out? We're just no longer going to?
So the, the, one of the problems, I'm sorry, I'm just speaking, but anybody else. So one of the problems with the consultant agreement is, it's really, has to fall under one of these exemptions that are allowed by state board of education rule. The consultant agreement also, or the current consultant agreement policy also had specific hourly rates.
Yep.
Listed, and a lot of times, when you hire a speaker or somebody to come in for a training, they want to give you a fixed fee. Well, then, we were trying to break it down by an hourly rate to work within the policy. And it had all these different approval limits, so we felt it was much easier to just stick with the same authority levels for all agreements.
Perfect. I, I think it's, it's very smart. Can I ask you this? Every single dollar that we spend on a consultant, there's some kind of an agreement out there somewhere that says what the consultant was for and what we're using it for, right?
For the most, if we're train, if we're hiring anybody to provide services, we generally do either a consultant agreement or a standard agreement for any type of service related.
So do we have anywhere that would cover all agreements in consulting that goes on in our district? Does that make sense to you? And this happened well before you were here, Dr. Mullins, but there was a couple of things that happened that I think would have gotten caught had we just had, anytime somebody comes and is provided compensatory services, there's a consultant agreement that is signed between us, the school district, and them, and lists out kind of what they did. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So I think maybe the portion on agreements, let me get to that. It is, let's see, page, bottom of page twelve, top of page thirteen on the redline version, talks about agreements. We also have some definitions in there for agreement and agreement review. And all agreements will be reviewed and approved by either the director of procurement and distribution services or designated and/or the school board attorney to ensure basically the district's protected. We're not signing indemnification language, we're not agreeing to venue in Alaska, you know, Jessica Lunsford Act. Language is in there when we need it, verpa, insurance, all of that is in there when we need it. So does that kind of answer?
Yeah, just, here's, I guess here's where I would like, is that if we have any agreement with anybody, that there's some kind of a contract or some kind of a trace on it that says what they did.
So if that helps, we do, we have developed a consultant agreement, a template, right?
Yes, I think we're calling it independent contractor.
Independent contractor agreement.
Yes.
So anytime anybody comes in and has received any kind of services, it is going to sign that independently?
We have a form to start with, right?
Yes.
Because sometimes they get altered.
Because sometimes somebody will come and say, hey, I'm going to give you a puppet show, right? And they have like, they invoice, they want to do it. We make them turn around and sign our agreement, so we make sure that they have insurance and that those things are covered. But we do have a temp, we have a, we have our big template that we use for our solicitation agreements, and then we have a smaller condensed template for independent contractors, which is normally your, your speaker who's coming in. Maybe they're doing the jump rope thing, or maybe they're doing, I'm trying to think of, I know there's a yo-yo guy when I was in fourth, when I taught fourth grade, they did that. Is that kind of what you're looking for?
No, not the yo-yo guy. I'm more concerned about, I'm mostly concerned about, and this isn't anybody in this room, but when we're all gone, in ten years from now, we may have consultants or people who may come to try to leverage our district. We want to make sure that those individuals are all registered and their, their contracts are signed. If they are going to give, say, the superintendent or Mr. Novelli or anybody any kind of advice for a fee, we want to make sure that we capture all of those. That's my main point.
Right.
If you feel secure, because you're amazing, well, I, I really appreciate your services. If you feel secure that this captures that, then I'm okay with it. But that's my main concern, is that we're all, we sometimes take for granted how good we work with each other and trust. That, that is where risk can develop, and I think that that's something that we should make sure. That if there is any kind of compensation that's given for any kind of advice or anything in the future, that that goes down on a contract, and it has the reason that they were, for instance, if somebody came in and said, I'm gonna help with, you know, some kind of a service that's coming up in the future and it goes through and then they get paid for that, then we want to make sure that there, that we have a trace on them in the future to protect the district from any risk.
Yeah, so we also, obviously, we issue purchase orders for anything we buy, or whether that's goods or services, or purchase P-card transaction. The back of our purchase order also has terms and conditions. So by them providing services, once they receive the purchase order, or filling the order, you know, say we're ordering some widgets or computers or whatever it is, they're, by fulfilling that purchase order, they're agreeing to those terms and conditions. So the buyer or myself kind of weigh, what are we buying? Are we buying services that have risk associated? Then we'll do, we'll go ahead and use one of our agreement templates. If we're ordering something that's gonna be delivered to us in three days, there's not as much risk, and if it's a low dollar amount, we'll just issue the purchase order.
So like, say, twelve years from now, superintendent or somebody's got, has to ask somebody for help on a specific topic, and they come in and they say, okay, I'll pay a fee of six thousand dollars, superintendent signs off that it's under twenty-five thousand, board doesn't have to agree to it, how do we capture that?
Letter of engagement.
Letter of engagement, and that's covered.
And so it goes, so it goes to, any of those agreements have to have a specific scope of services, it's what it is. It goes to procurement, they assign it a tracking number. The person, whoever it is, has to register as a vendor and everything. There can be no payments issued. I think maybe that's what you're getting to.
So everybody that ever receives any kind of payment for services is registered as a vendor in our district?
Like, I could go play the piano at second semester school until I became a vendor. It's our district.
So we're sure that, and, okay, and we have a process that captures that?
Oh, yes. We have a vendor application that includes conflict of interest information. Yes, I couldn't be a pianist for the district because I was a substitute.
Right. And I, I understand, I understand that vendor agreement, but if you think that that captures it there, and.
So we can't authorize payment to anyone who is not registered as a vendor. And we don't offer as a payment.
They have to be entered as a vendor. And then, and, you know, some, part of the vendor application is we ask, because we require someone at a school or a department to sign off. You know, we don't just enter vendors that just come straight to us and want to get in our financial system. So we say, what are you gonna be buying? And then that, a lot of times, will spur on them sending us a quote or an agreement or whatnot. And then we also evaluate the purchase order when it comes in to figure out, does this need an agreement associated with it? Or does our purchase order terms and conditions protect us?
Perfect. Can I keep going?
There's more?
So, so vendor relations on sixty-four sixty, it talked about, there was a term in there that said, thing of value. On the original sixty-four sixty, it says that you can't receive compensation, payment, all that stuff as a school board member or a thing of value. I didn't know where that came from, or if it got transferred into this new one. It's just a gray area and it made me kind of scared.
What letter is it?
I'm sorry. In sixty-four sixty, vendor relations, there was one that talked about not receiving a thing of value. And that, I didn't know if it made its way into this new policy anywhere. I'm sorry, I couldn't search.
It's here.
What page?
So it's on, hold on a second, sixty-four sixty. Clause of debarment? I'm just, I just did a value search, so I don't know if it's the one, but I think it's.
I think the very front of the policy, where we talk about standards of ethical conduct, really addresses the gifts and favors.
Right.
We also have several other policies in different sections that address conflict of interest and not accepting gifts or favors or anything like that.
Is there no minimum value?
That was, that's where I was going, is that we're, we're guided by state statutes as to how much we can receive, and then we have to give like, if it's twenty-five dollars or more, we have to report it and all of our stuff. Can we use that as guidance, or?
Well, they talk about in the first line here on standards and the standards of ethics. Our procurement functions must comply with the board policies, Florida statutes, and rules related to standards.
Number four, perfect. I, the other, the other issue that I was going to say is, in other past, we've had it to where school board members cannot do business with the school district for X amount of time after they're done in a lobby, I mean. Um, is that addressed anywhere in our policies? Do we need to bring that up?
It's a statute.
Is that two years?
Right now it's two years, but starting, uh, which you're going to learn at your ethics training tomorrow, starting, uh, twenty, twenty-two, maybe it's six years, it's moving up.
Perfect. All right, that's great. So what I'm hearing you say is that it's covered through the Florida statutes.
For, for school board members to lobby, right. Um, for, for employees, you have the thirty-two twelve, the thirty-two fourteen, which is your gifts policy about accepting anything of value, right? And it says, employees shall neither accept nor solicit anything of value, including a gift, right?
I just, that anything of value becomes a real tricky sticky thing because somebody hands you a lot of pop, it's a thing of value.
Right.
So whatever, because that's why they gave a minimum threshold.
Yeah, our policies do not describe, uh, to put a threshold on what that is. I know other districts have five dollars, um, but then it would exclude something like a, a, a phone charger with Sprint on it, you know, if, if Sprint was your vendor.
So that's another policy we can do with that later.
I think that goes into your gifts and your ethics policy to, to define that.
So, one of the things that I, I really,
We have it at fifty.
What about an individual and so, does the district, can the district hire a school board member for six years after? Because it's not part of the procurement process, can they dis- can they hire? Say Matt Susan wants to go back and be a teacher.
You're, you're no longer a school board member, you could be.
So that's not considered and covered in any of this?
No, because you're not lobbying before the district for anything, you're just going to be, you're going to have a scope of employment.
Okay, so can I consider that our vendor registration and all of that stuff is also, could be considered part of like a lobbyist registration? Because here's where I'm, here's where I'm mostly concerned now. When I first became a school board member, I got phone calls from various people that I know saying that, hey, this contract has, um, like I've been working with this company to be on that contract, do you have any questions about it? And they were individuals that were former representatives in state and, and people like that. How do we stop that? Because that pisses me off more than anything. No, you can't, we, I want to pop, does, is there anybody that would like to put together a mini lobbyist registration and work on that in the future date to avoid that from happening? Because I don't want our board members in the future to be contacted to, to feel like they're influenced based upon somebody outside. That's exactly what a lobbyist does. And I would love to put that policy together and bring it in later.
I just don't answer those phone calls.
I've never had any.
Oh, and by the way, this is for Robert Passat. Here's a, a vendor that contacted me, can have that.
But, but.
But no, we could look into a lobbying policy.
A lobbying registration policy.
Registration.
To mimic sort of the statutes, I would love to bring that forward and I'll tell you why. It's not us, it's not in here, but I want to avoid it in the future. Because whereas it's happening, is Dr. Mullins or somebody else may not see what's coming. And I'll tell you, it happens in the, and, and probably the reason that I, it's me is because of the involvement that I have in a lot of the healthcare issues that I have. So I have contacts that are in those. And I think that I want to avoid any future issue where school board members are being contacted and people have not been registered as people to the district. Because that needs to happen. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, I mean, I get them just calling me, then I usually send it to Dr. Mullins.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if, if, can we, do you guys feel confident to move forward with that? As a, to start investigating as a policy?
I think we can certainly ask him, maybe bring back recommendations for how to address that situation.
Yeah, can you take a peek into what surrounding districts do? Is there anyone else who has something like that?
I know, I know, I can see if Neala has a sample and lobbying policy. I'm not sure how, if our local municipalities do, but it might be, look, it might be important to look to see if Brimford County has one or some of our major cities have one and make ours similar to theirs, if that makes sense.
And in relations to that, do we have anything that captures commissions that are based upon?
Then, then Mr. Susan can say, I'm sorry, Joe, policy thirty-four oh seventy-one, so I can't talk to you right now.
Go register. Go register. No, I can just say, go register. The other thing is, do we have anything to capture commissions? So I am a person that is working with Vendor Link. Vendor Link comes forward, I have a relationship with all of these board members. Vendor Link is going to pay me directly, but you're not paying me. So do you have anything to capture my commissions that I'm being made? In insurance, we call them a fifty-five hundred. It's a form that we make sure that nobody receives commissions that we don't see covered. Does that make sense? Do we have anything to capture commissions based upon other people coming forward to lobby?
Do we, who gets commissions?
Well, there's a lot of people who get commissions.
But, but here in our schools, in our school system. No, this policy, yeah.
So you're saying if we have a current contract with a vendor and they go receive a, they subcontract something, that they can't get commissions?
No, 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 so I'm, I'm Vendor Link. I know that there's going to be a bid coming up, right? I go ahead and grab one of the former board members. I say, hey, here's what's going to happen, or a state representative or somebody else. We're going to be in the middle of this, this bid, so I'd like you, since you have a relationship with Jane Klein or Sue Han or anybody else, to put us and have us have a meeting.
But that would be lobbying though.
For that, I'm receiving a commission for doing that. That happens all the time in my world. They're called door openers. So how do we capture that and stop that?
How do you, I, I, I don't even know law, but if somebody asks to do that and we were going to vote on it, I would say no. Like I wouldn't leave them.
Not you.
I wouldn't be trying to.
What I'm saying was, is that like, so, so like, let's say for instance, there's a contract coming forward for insurance, and I'll try to make this quick, Sue, I'm so sorry that it's taking you some time, but this is a big deal for me. If somebody's coming forward with a contract and they know that something's going out to solicit a bid, they may hire somebody through a commissions that they may get in the future or do something like that in order to gain access.
So, hey, Joe, you know the, all the board members, I'll give you five thousand dollars if I win this contract?
Or superintendent, deputy superintendent. Yes, percentage of the contract, so you'll get like, so say Aon won the business for us and it was two hundred thousand dollars a year, they will pay thirty percent of your first year.
Are you thinking Joe's going to like trick you and not tell you that he's representing Aon?
No. Not at all, I'm just saying that there are people that have access to our school districts and it, not right now, but in the future. They will leverage those meetings to try to push another vendor and receive commissions off.
How do you propose fixing that?
You, in insurance, it's a.
Is that school board policy or is that state law?
In insurance, we currently tell Aon they can't receive any commissions off of any of our vendors that we have. It's called a fifty-five hundred form. What we could say is that we don't allow anybody to receive commissions that, from our vendors. That would be amazing.
Does that need to be in policy, Ms. Endall, or is that just a?
Do you see where I'm trying to go with this?
I think, I think it might be in your lobbyist policy, is what I'm thinking.
Maybe it's inside there. I would love to stop that from happening, so.
And I don't know that we can, because it's not ours, it's, it's an agreement between, say, you're using Vendor Link and the outside person. We can't stop that from happening.
Well, then we can ask them to register that when they're speak, when they're doing it. That if they've been involved in any lobbying activities, please put that as part of your, your thing. There's something we can do there to capture it.
Can you look into our lobbyist policy and get back, just send us all an email letting us know if that's in there somewhere?
Some issues that I want to.
Do you have more for this policy?
No, sorry.
I have three quick, very tiny typo corrections.
Okay.
Um, I'm looking on the clean version, page three, two B.
Oh, it has two B.
Fourth line, toward the end, solicitations agreements. We have an, we have an ass on solicitation that shouldn't be there.
Three, one, B. Okay, you have?
Three.
Two, B.
It's under two B. Fourth line down toward the end of the line. Solicitations agreements. We just needed to drop the S.
Solicitations agreement.
No, solicitation agreements, I think.
That's the question.
Yep. Um, next page, page four, top paragraph, first line, negotiations with vendors or a vendor providing such commodities. Page ten. Third paragraph down, I, I, I. Page ten, I, I, okay. I, I, I. I, I. Um, the second line, enable the district to identify it and it at B.
Yep.
I'm not sure what that was supposed to say, but I'm pretty sure it wasn't that.
No, it wasn't that.
Amazing work from this policy guys, thank you.
And the person, I'm taking out it at. Right.
It's extra.
Okay, does anyone have any other comments or questions about this policy? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mavelli and Ms. Brabham. We will now hear from Ms. Sue Han, Assistant Superintendent, Han. Han? Han, why can't I remember?
Here one.
No, which one is it?
Han.
Han. Sometimes that Han just slips back in.
Okay.
No.
My husband's brother uses Han, so.
So, really, yeah. Now, Ms. Sue Han, Assistant Superintendent of Facility Services, will facilitate the presentation and discussion on capacity.
Thank you, how much time do we have?
You have thirteen minutes.
You have thirteen minutes, okay, good. We're going to do our best, you know, she's out here in thirteen minutes.
If we go over, it is fine.
We will, we will. So, um.
I think we could easily go to four fifteen without any, you know, anxiety or, we have more than four or four thirty.
All right, so. So, most of what I want to talk about is capacity today and some new ideas about capacity, but before we do that, we give everyone a goat.
We have goats! Oh, that's longer! Doesn't that make you happy, guys?
We believe we are going to actually be using goats at Imperial Estates to clear the retention pond.
I am vindicated and justified.
We've gotten through, we got P.O. like in the system.
Oh wow.
We've gotten through mismanagement, so as best I can tell, we're going to be doing that relatively soon.
Can you say that again? What are you doing with the goats and where?
Imperial Estates Elementary.
I think that may be worthy of a shout-out by a fellow board member tonight to Miss Desk, for bringing that forward.
Thank you for making me the goat lady again. What are they doing at Imperial?
We're going to clear the reti- so the retention pond area, we can't get in there to mow, the slopes are too steep.
Are you using the rumor of the people that I sent you?
I don't know which vendor we are using. We actually found more than one vendor, so. So anyway, I don't know which vendor. All I know is we're making progress on goats and I will let you all know a couple of weeks in advance before goats happen so that we can do a goat celebration.
I'm going to go see them.
I want to also, I think, and we should. These goats have a no petting policy.
Do these goats allow goat yoga?
So.
It just may warrant giving Sue the goat award. Goat stands for, right? Greatest of all time.
This is, that's the best picture, look at that picture.
Dave found this picture and, and put this in for me.
You did that, that's why you're getting a promotion.
Dave, we know that there's not that cute a goat out there.
How many goats will be out there?
There's probably, there's probably like a tribe.
There's, there's a whole, there's a whole brochure that tells you, they're not unattended, they stay, somebody stays with them.
A goat herder.
There's actually somebody that sits out there while they eat. Oh my God.
Because they could get injured, we don't want them to get injured.
The goats? Because kids might be like, go!
No, because of alligators.
You sound like you might be a goat franchise.
I, I read, I read the brochure, it got injured me too.
Yeah. So anyhow, um, well, this is really, really important. I don't want to take away from, from our new school and where we're heading with that. So just a few introductory remarks, we're looking at capacity very differently. We realize, one of the things that we have done in the past is our capacity decisions have been very facilities driven and transportation driven and we really want them to be more people, student, family, community driven. And we may still get to the same place, it may still be uncomfortable, but we want to sort of start the framework a little differently than we have in the past. So we're looking at things differently. So you'll see some new ideas when Davis is doing his presentation. Uh, another factor that I think is super important for us to consider is that we are now in a competitive environment. So when we think about doing boundary changes that are uncomfortable for our community, our families have choices that do not involve us. And so we really need to think strategically about how we are doing attendance boundary changes in our future. And so we see some things in our presentation today that are reflective of that thinking. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave and try to get you a lot of here in, uh, ten minutes or less. Go ahead, Dave, it's all yours.
And as Sue said, there is competition, there are choices and I just put this map up here just so you know. Heinz Crest Charter School is right at about one mile from the new school site. They're under construction, we're ahead of them, but they're planning to open twenty-twenty at the same time. So why are we building a new school? Well, manatee and quest are far above the capacity that that was built for. I mean, manatees are eighty percent and, um, quest is almost thirty percent with seventeen portables between those two. That's three hundred seventy-four students in portables.
They.
The area company's telling us, just in the area around the new school, there's another fourteen hundred homes that will be built within five years.
How fast is that school going to be full?
They've been pretty good about the projections.
They're both well over capacity.
Our school?
The new school, how fast will it be full, are you projecting? Hmm, it'll take a little while.
So, the goal of the new school is definitely alleviate the strain of manatee and quest. Um, and, you know, provide capacity for all the new growth that's coming in, the South Bay area. Uh, we want to open the school with a new approach and we also want to make sure that it's at a sufficient number to operate efficiently and be comparable to other elementary schools. It's built for nine hundred seventy, but we're not planning to open with that many students. Uh, most of the houses that would fill up that school in the area aren't there yet, but, you know, we have to have the school there so that students can move in. Looking at the traditional method, that's, um, clearly been unpopular in some of our other endeavors. And it, it's disruptive. It also kind of makes parents think that we're taking away their choices, so we want to try and stick with the idea that they have a choice and go with a different concept, which is, um, not having an attendance boundary as we open the school and allowing us to have sufficient time to decide whether we, with what the attendance boundary should be and when.
So how, do you decide, nobody's going to be bused, is this just going to be?
First year.
First year, it's whoever wants to come, if you can walk, ride your bike, if your parents want to drive it, you can go.
There's.
And then two miles, the, I mean, the, it's a mile before the roads even there really right now. So all the houses that are going to be built in the next five years are going to be within the blocking zone, pretty much.
Okay.
So that's our recommended approach. You know, no transportation, open up the school. Uh, we originally said we wanted to open up just to manatee and quest students, but we discussed it with various departments and senior staff and we thought, you know, really we should have the equity to open it up to the entire county. Um, there might be a lot of people who work in this area that, uh, parents would like to bring their, uh, children to the area. And when we did the projections at thirteen hundred students, if we accepted up to four hundred students out of area, by the time they're graduated from sixth grade, it wouldn't overstress the new school based on the four hundred students that we expect to be there in the next.
Especially the goat.
So with that, you know, we're definitely looking for your feedback. We, you know.
Absolutely.
A lot of thumbs up, thumbs.
You got a thumb?
Yeah, they're, just so you guys know, they converted literally the lunchroom into a classroom at, at Quest. They're, they're, it is beyond.
Features down even.
But here's the next one. Manatee is the new quest in a year and a half. They're already there, they're building in, so you'll see some recommendations that were in your book that we tried to do two years ago. Maybe something on the horizon.
The idea of the open boundaries is. Cover your ears, Ms. Archer, I would like our whole district just to be open. Just go where you want to go. Cover your, you're not covering it.
I'm totally opposed to that.
And I just, like, I can see your whole team like, really? But.
We have an open district.
My only concern about this, and I, I am, I am thumbs up, I think this is a great way to go because we, it'll give us an idea of nothing else, of who's coming from where to this school. Okay, well then, let's put the boundaries in this area if we decide to go, you know, this boundary later. The only, my only concern is it kind of creates an elite school where, you know, well, I guess it's kind of like our choice school, so it's not choice school, but, you know, only people who can get their kids here can come here. There's, there's not transportation, so if you don't have the way to get your child there, then it's, you know. But then again, looking at the particular area where the school's located, it was going to be.
It already, yeah, it is by, by its location, it's going to be.
When is Pineda going to be opened up that's going to tie right into that wizard?
We're expecting it to be there in five years.
Oh, so if anybody comes from, from Grant Haven, from those areas in Sun Tree up there, they will have to go up, over, and down, which doesn't bother them anyway, they wait in line for an hour and a half before school's out anyway, but, okay.
And that could change though, based on the development patterns and the sales for the area company. I mean, their, their estimate to us is five years. I mean, their estimate to us is five years. Obviously, they want to be conservative in the rest of it and not tell us something that they can't deliver on.
Sounds like you have five people supporting so far.
You know, we, you know, Mr. Susan already brought up the other considerations that we're looking at in the central area. I mean.
The same list that we've been fighting for for three years.
Giving us more time to analyze a possible boundary also allows us more time to look at all the other options and, you know, do some updates and make some logical boundaries in the central area. And over the years, we've had a list of different proposals and some of them are good, some of them are bad, some of them, you know, might be good. We don't really know right now, so we're, I'm gonna go through a few of those. They're just things that we've looked at, thought about, just so you know where we're at and, you know, once again, we'd love your feedback on it. As I said.
How many students is out of that?
Would also be a big impact.
It's the top. It's on the next slide.
Thirteen, fifteen?
The future Pioneer extension is definitely a big impact on the central area because whether schools, whether students from east of ninety-five could access the new school or even Quest makes a big difference.
Should I say something real quick?
Sure.
So, when I made a couple of these, all came from proposals from two years ago. When I did this, it was under the auspice that we are rezoning and sending people to schools, but when we did those rezones, a certain percentage of them, in some words, between a third up to a half, do not actually attend the school that we rezoned it for because they were angry about the rezone. So, we actually lost a lot of FTE dollars by rezoning and we kind of went against the purpose of what we did. So, I came up with these by knocking on doors in the communities and found out, hey, what do you think? Do you think that this is a good idea? What is your opinion? And what I found was every one of these that I went to go knock on doors, this was what they, what they thought was the best case. And you'll see this with the Sherwood people and everything else. And what it would do is, is it would allow them to go to the schools that they originally wanted to. So, that's where this came from. It wasn't that I came up one day and started just drawing lines and I went and knocked on the doors in the neighborhoods. So.
So, once again, you know, our transportation looked at this and said, oh, yeah, that'd be great, you know? We don't have to take a whole section of the mainland, drive all the way over the bridge, over Seapark. Sun Tree's right there. A lot of those students would be either in the walking zone or a much shorter bus ride.
Can you tell me that bottom line for the Seapark boundary, does that include that whole new neighborhood that's going in? Nope, Seapark boundary, main beachside, over there. Which street is that? I can't see it when I zoom in. Does that include the new neighborhood that they're just starting to build in old south housing?
I have to get back to you on that.
Because if you can move that boundary down, then we can lose those Sun Tree kids. No problem, because they're building a whole new neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, it's thirteen students in this mainland area.
But Seapark feeds every kid they can get, like they've spent at risk before.
The other, the other issue is.
Sue, can you find out if the boundary includes, because there's no houses in there. They flattened it, and so now would be the time to switch that boundary before they build the houses, before people move in and get back.
Is it Montecito?
Montecito's already there. There's a whole new development.
It's the, it's the old vacant South Housings.
Montecito is part of Old South Housing, but now there's a whole new, another one.
Yeah, we'll check.
Dave, can you tell me what thirteen kids percentage-wise would be roughly for Seapark? One fourth, two points?
Three percent for Seapark.
And out of that, out of that area, did you take a look at what all those other kids, because there's only thirteen that are going to Seapark. There's kids I know that are going to.
I don't have those exact numbers, but yeah, let's say there was nineteen students, so there's, you know, maybe one that goes to Freedom Seven and two that go to a charter. I don't know exactly, but I know there's not a majority of anything.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
This is another area that we've looked at in the past that we just want to put on the radar. You know, these two sections that are currently zoned for Manatee that are east of ninety-five seem like it'd be much more appropriate to go to either Williams or Anderson, looking at those schools. We do have capacity. Obviously, we want to get the input from the community and talk to people and find out the other issues that are really more people-focused. But we do think that this is something that we should start considering and moving forward through the process if we can find the best solution for.
If you look at this, and I'm sorry again, this is just my passion. Number two actually drives by Ralph Williams to get to Manatee. And if Manatee's gonna expand, it's considerable amount. I mean, and you're, you look at the numbers, they fit, and Anderson could use those kids. So, that's why that was.
And Manatee really needs some relief.
If you want, there's bigger color maps on the back that make it easier to see.
We also looked at some other areas between Creole, Longleaf and Sherwood, and some of the borders there kind of looked like somebody gerrymandered them when they drew them, but probably at the time they were trying to fill up new schools and took in extra neighborhoods and then those borders stayed because, you know, people were in a border and they didn't want to change. Ideally, it would be nice to clean up some of these just for the look of it, but right now, we don't really have the capacity or the need for these. We do want to keep this on the radar because as we're looking at the new school and Pioneer being right there, this could be a possibility to change the boundaries in a more holistic approach with all, all of the area elementaries involved.
Can you go back one?
Yep.
So, if you guys look at this.
Hundred and eleven students. Zoned for Creole, which is down here.
Can you look up here again?
Mr. Susan's suggested bringing it up to Sherwood.
So, when I did this, these originally had all gone to Sherwood. And what it is, is that that's within the actual walking distance. And then when we did the numbers, this would reduce, according to transportation at the time, two bus rooms. And on top of that, Creole is a massive Title I school. It's much larger than a lot of the other Title I schools that are in the district compared to Sherwood, Croton, you know, Harbor City and all the rest of them. So, this would reduce Creole's size to be manageable as a Title I school, also fill Sherwood, which is, could use the numbers, plus reduce the amount of buses. Sorry, just want to put that up.
And to the point, there's a hundred and eleven students that are actually attending Creole in this area, but there's two hundred sixteen elementary students, so you see only really fifty percent are going to their own school. Thirteen are already going to Sherwood somehow.
But there's your numbers with FTE.
But the rest are either going somewhere else, a different charter or a different VPS school.
For every hundred students is eight hundred and something thousand dollars to our district just event.
This area is kind of similar. Currently at Sherwood, a zone for Longleaf, they probably drive right by Longleaf. Forty-two students are attending Sherwood, even though there's a hundred and twenty elementary students in the area and twenty-two are already attending Longleaf.
So.
It's a boundary that's almost not.
So, a third of them are the only ones that attend, and if you knocked on it, they just don't have the availability of transportation to actually send a kid anywhere else. And that's why they end up at Sherwood. But we're losing a considerable amount of kids there also to the charter.
What's your recommendation?
So, looking at it right now, today, with just those areas, we're not recommending that because it doesn't really. Currently, they're pretty balanced. The proposal would actually put them more out of balance. But we are gonna keep this on the radar and we do think that there is probably some adjustments that could occur, but we don't want to do one thing and then have to rezone again. We want to do it all together with any other proposals for the new school as well.
Did you put in there that we have that new Pine, Pinecrest, not Pinecrest, Pineapple Cove is building another charter right there?
Yeah, but they don't have their.
I thought it was right by the.
Not anymore.
Oh.
They're, they're, that didn't actually turn out to be a very big piece of property, so they're looking to go elsewhere. Not familiar with the area, but it's closer to West Mountain.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'm still awaiting a final.
But Pinecrest is already getting folks in my neighborhoods that are saying that they're registering for Pinecrest already, the one that's next to Quest. They said that they've got emails going out and they're signing up for something.
And they may be.
Okay, so they're still on the slate to open twenty twenty-one?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So, once again, we are recommending moving forward with the Seaparks and Sun Tree one this year, and the other ones, we're gonna defer. We'd like to start the process early for the Manatee areas, get the community involved, get some input and see if this is the right thing.
Question's about the Seaparks to Sun Tree. I think long-term, it's a great idea. I zoomed in. I really think that new neighborhood is Seapark now, which means Seapark will grow just as the houses get built. But are you like grandfathering people in or are you taking a sixth grader out next year and switching the school? Because those Seapark kids that have been since kindergarten.
And we're here to get your feedback.
I would say that you allow them to continue to go to Seapark.
Yeah, anyone new, anyone kindergarten.
Well, it's not hard to yellow into Seapark, but.
They're willing to get transportation.
But those, that's a highly, when I asked that question, they, they had no problem getting rides because the majority didn't want to give rides, so.
So, we'll, we'll approach that subject through the process and through the.
Thank you.
Any other feedback on just other considerations in the central area?
Are we gonna need board representatives for our community things for every, every area?
We are, we're looking at a couple of meetings. One, one in the Biera area for the new school specifically. We're gonna do that coming up here relatively soon, and then we're anticipating one or two in North River, maybe it gets to that. The, the idea of all this moving around, we're gonna start that next year versus trying to.
Do you need a separate one for the Seaparks?
The Seapark one, we thought we would do just by notification from the, from the school administration, just thinking about this versus a community.
It's a small.
It's a small.
Yeah, we call those thirteen.
So, I'll move on real quick to the north area. I mean, we had originally received a request from transportation about a neighborhood that was split, and we thought we'd clean that up. When we looked at it, Ms. Klein, Ms. Archer said, hey, you know, there's some other things in the area that we should also analyze. We have a non-contiguous zone that's zoned for Imperial Estates, pretty much drives by Kokina and is much closer to Apollo as well. And then just to the north of that non-contiguous zone is an area that's zoned for MIMS, that students are on the bus for more than forty-five minutes is long. From the educational perspective, this is not a good thing for elementary students. So, we're looking at that area a little closer. We thought, okay, we could take the cleanup of that one area that transportation meant, that's ten students, the north area that's currently zoned for MIMS, and send that area to Apollo, which would be closer and Apollo could handle it. And then the rest of the non-contiguous area, not the cleanup little sliver right there, that would then be zoned for Kokina, which needs some students. And when we looked at the far south, Apollo has a section that looked like it almost be more appropriate to go to Imperial Estates. So, in this analysis, the red ones are in the red zone, twenty-sixth and a small sliver of the non-contiguous that's currently zoned for Imperial to Apollo, so, and then down at the south end of Apollo, it actually negates sixty-eight students, and that would go to Imperial. So, it's almost like a lot, sixty-eight students would.
I, I looked at that and I can't see where the sixty-eight students are going to Kokina.
Well, there's two areas that have sixty-eight students. That's what's.
Okay, but which color?
The blue would go to Kokina.
Okay, that's going, that's currently going to Imperial Estates.
It's currently going to Imperial Estates and they're pretty much driving by Kokina.
Okay, so the red has a little piece of kids going to Imperial Estates.
Just a tiny piece, the ten students that were in that split neighborhood.
Okay. Gotcha.
And, you know, to do this today, it would balance a little bit, you know? It would make MIMS a little bit lower in capacity, but everything else would be a little bit more balanced. So, it is a suggestion that we're recommending. We go bring to the community and get more input and take it through the process. Now, twenty-four hours ago, we got more information from Ms. Belford and we also wanted to look at areas. And this is a consideration that we should, you know, definitely keep on the table, and we don't have to do anything in this area. I mean, it's not a capacity issue. It's an issue where we want to do something that's better for the students. So, looking at the comments from Ms. Belford, there is an area just north of MIMS that could alleviate some of the crowding at Pinewood. This area is not a lot of students. There's twenty-four students total and sixteen currently are attending Pinewood. To rezone them to MIMS would be helpful to both schools. Another couple of areas, we were asked to look at student counts is, once again, in the far south area of MIMS, which goes down to almost a forty-five minute or more bus ride, just north of that, between South Street and Garden Street. Once again, it turned out to be about sixty-eight students, but forty-five students were actually attending MIMS in this light blue area. And then a bigger area, which includes an hospital complex, has a hundred and five students that are attending MIMS. Now, the thought was maybe look at, bring them to Oak Park. It's something we can definitely consider and put into our analysis. We're not recommending anything today, but we definitely want to keep this on, on our docket and make sure we're doing the best boundary changes if we're gonna.
Is US One considered a hazard where, where if the kids were, would they?
Certain areas, if there's a certain crosswalk and, you know, I don't know all the factors. You'd have to talk to somebody from transportation, but there, there are some places that they could walk across.
Okay.
So, that's all we have for north area. Is there any specific comments that you want to give?
So, you're not necessarily recommending that we make any of these changes this, for next school year?
What we'd like to do is move forward with the process and reach out to the community and kind of see what, what feedback we get in the community. There's no compelling reason to do this from a capacity standpoint, so if we get yay, let's go, we'll do something, and if we get nah, we need to think about it a little bit more, we can do that. So, that's, that's the plan, to reach out to the community and start having some conversations about this.
Ms. Klein, did you have anything you wanted to include in your conversation?
The one piece, if you go back to the slide of the Titusville, that one or that one. The big piece that makes the greatest sense to me is the students from South Street, South. That is the cutoff for middle school and high school. So, those students currently are being bused to MIMS, which is in a different feeder system. So, we're putting them in a feeder system for one middle school, high school, and then moving them to another.
At six per.
And those same students are driving forty-five minutes?
Yes. That, to me, if, if we can do anything, that's the right thing to do for kids.
Ms. Klein, didn't you say that all my proposals were just as favorable?
I know. I agree with that.
Well, you know, I mean, I live way down the other end of the district, but I even had somebody concerned to me about all the kids who were, you know, in that area, way down Titusville, going all the way up to MIMS for.
And it really is, for so many reasons, it's really problematic. So, MIMS was one of our lowest performing schools last year. They have some attendance issues, and part of the reason that they have some attendance issues is because a lot of those students are low-income students, so if they miss the bus, they don't have a way to get to school. But, I mean, we, we had this conversation ad nauseam when we went through the school closures and these boundaries were proposed. But not only do they not have a way to get to school should they miss the bus, but getting parent involvement is difficult because parents don't have a way to get to the school to participate in what's going on at the school. Obviously, if kids are sick, they can't get picked up from school. Sense of building a community is a bit of a struggle. There's also some cultural clash between that particular area and a more northern area that feeds into MIMS. And so, it, it just really, from, from the get-go, when the boundary changes were made, it just has not been good for MIMS. And if we are going to, they have been working really, really hard to turn things around, but I feel like this is one element that is really holding them back because, as you can imagine, kids who have a lot going on in the world outside of school anyway, who put them on the bus for forty-five minutes to get to school, behavioral issues and it, it just, it just compounds and compounds and compounds. So, I, I absolutely support the recommendation, and it was actually my request that we go a little further to Garden Street to pull those kids out of MIMS somehow because that's a, it's only about four, four blocks maybe between Garden Street and South Street, but it just would alleviate a little bit more of that.
And if we just did that next area to the north, you know, MIMS would go down a little bit more and Oak Park would actually be able to handle forty-five students. So, it's something definitely to consider.
And MIMS is at over ninety percent free and reduced.
Right. And Oak Park, so MIMS and Oak Park, both high, free and reduced. Oak Park is not at ninety percent. Oak Park is a high ESE population. Oak Park is a high ESE population. And so I would be hesitant to push them, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna see Oak Park at ninety percent again because that was not good for the school at all. I am concerned about bringing MIMS down to fifty-five percent, which is why I recommended potentially pulling some of those Pinewood kids in to offset the move of the Garden Street to South Street out of MIMS. So I think if we were to look at that, we would probably need to do those in conjunction so we don't put MIMS in jeopardy of, you know, losing allegations and potentially being a target. Okay.
Great. The last slide is just to be transparent and let you know, there's a couple of other things that we're thinking about. We have a high school attendance boundary change that we've looked at a couple of times between Heritage and Bayside. Still too early to make a recommendation, there's a lot of different developments in both areas and depending on who builds first, that might be more appropriate. In our six to twenty-year long-range plan, we do still have a school in West Melbourne. Really depends what the future holds for us as well as the possibility of a secondary school, middle school in the Biera area. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I know we do, but, but there's one thing that's happening also, is that Biera High School is getting, it's at ninety-six, ninety-seven percent. And what's happening to Manatee and all the rest of them is happening to the high school. We're sending in portables at a cost of, what is it, eighty thousand dollars? So what we were talking about, just to put it on the radar, is that Biera is missing the extra section that Bayside and Heritage has. And you can use impact dollars to build out the extra wing, which would bring them into a better percentage. We would be actually saving dollars for our operation of capital by using impact fees to build out the extra wing. So we had talked about that and that's just something else that we should be maybe considering because we can use impact fees to pay for, for the construction of air conditioning too. Right?
I'm sorry, are you done?
No, I'm done.
I have one very quick comment for Dr. Mullins actually, and then I'm shutting up, I promise you. Conversation with Jane Klein yesterday, as I know you know some of the challenges that some of these schools face and some of the public perception issues. I think it's really important that we start now with all of the potential situations to really highlight the great things going on at some of these schools. Like we had, you know, the Heritage Bayside was a contentious one, there are great things going on at both schools. I think we need to pull in our government community relations folks and make sure that we are really putting some highlights on the great things going on in these schools that we are potentially recommending that we shift students to so that we can offset some of the parental concern. Okay, everybody have anything else that would be enough? Meeting's earned, take five.